We have called this meeting of the Lansing City Council Committee Hall to order. Now, as the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
Present participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Wood.
Present participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitsley.
Present participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Present participating remotely from Port Austin, Michigan.
Councilmember Garza.
Present participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
And councilmember Jackson.
Present participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Bet.
Present participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
You have a full quorum of the council.
Thank you. Welcome all to our final of our marathon, five weeks in a row of city council meetings. We will, first order of business this evening is the approval of the minutes from the last committee of the whole meeting, which was on the 10th of May. Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move the meeting minutes from May 10th as presented.
Meeting minutes have been moved. Is there any, are there any comments on the minutes? Seeing none, if the clerk could please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitsley.
Yes, sorry.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bet.
Yes.
And councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Those wishing to make public comment will have three minutes to do so. If you're interested in providing public comment, please make sure to raise your hand. On a Mac computer, it's Option Y, a PC, it is Alt Y, and your phone it is star nine. I only see one member of the public here. And no hands. So I will pause just a minute. Very good, we will move on then. The first item is the noise special permit for Hoffman Brothers for the CSO and Trunksir project along North Grand River Avenue for Saturdays from 8:00 until 5:00 p.m., beginning on May 8th through October 30th. And I know we have Alec here to present, so we'll go ahead and call on him.
Yes, I mainly just wanted to see if you folks had any questions. We, I'd indicated in an email to council that I received a couple verbal comments, but I urged those two individuals to put in writing or participate in the hearing. I understand they did not participate in the hearing. I hope they at least sent you an email. I'd included the central council email on the postcard invitations to residents. But mainly just wanted to see if a few folks had any questions. I sent the mailing list and the project map to you folks prior. But maybe I'll give you an opportunity to ask me any questions you have.
Sure, we, I will, before I call on councilmember Wood, I'll just remind folks why this is here in front of committee of the hall instead of committee of operations. It came to us in a manner that needed some timely changes. So it's before us for tonight. And actually, in the header, it's wrong. The waiver will start on the 22nd of May through October 30th. There is a letter of support in the packet, and the noise waiver is there as a resolution. So, councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Alec, if you could tell us what verbal communication you had.
Yes, I can tell you specifically the two individuals. There was Brian Carter at 1620 North Grand River Avenue. That's the north-south piece. He lives in a blue house on the east side of the road. Brian called, and he said he was glad to see the project happening with a comment, "It's about time," of course, with improvements in the area. And regarding the noise waiver, Brian stated that he was in favor of approval of the noise waiver because he had no objection to the contractor working on Saturday. He stated that the work and noise didn't bother him. I think, again, he was pleased that there were some improvements happening in the area. I, with both of these individuals, I encouraged them to send an email, at least to either get on the hearing and make a comment on the record on the hearing, or at least send an email to city council, city.council@lansingmi.gov. That address was on the postcard. The second individual was Dennis Benjamin. I had not spoken to Mr. Carter previously. That was my first contact with him. I'd spoken to Mr. Benjamin, Dennis Benjamin, multiple times about project stuff. Pleasant individual. He lives at 2319 North Grand River. I have phone numbers for both of these individuals and the times they called. Mr. Benjamin stated that he was in favor of the contractor having the ability to work Saturdays in the hope that the work would be completed earlier. And again, similarly, I urged Mr. Benjamin to send an email or get on the Zoom call to go on the public hearing record.
Okay, and then my next question, I know I spoke about this, I think at the time that we were setting the public hearing, and that had to do with the project manager and making sure that we were communicating with the residents that had disabilities or would have the need to get in and out of their driveways because of being seniors or handicapped. So has that been addressed?
Well, at the outset of the project, I sent a letter asking, you know, it's a little separate, but just as important. We asked folks to identify themselves if they have any mobility needs and things like that. A couple on the south side of North Street, and I, if, if I knew we were talking about that subject, I could identify them. Woman called about her and her husband on the south side. Again, she's just, she's immediately east of Capital Auto Care on the southeast corner there. And we have special plans for them because they definitely have mobility issues. We're going to get them in and out. Those were the only people that contacted me about mobility issues. But if there's anybody, you know, we will, in this case too, there's not any real deep work there, fortunately, in that area. So we can accommodate them, we'll get them in and out. The main problem for those folks is when we want to do their concrete driveway approach. But we think we can use early strength concrete and then put some material over top of it so it doesn't break. We'll make a plan for them to make sure that we get them in and out. There were, they were definitely concerned. I'll try to find her name real quick. I know the house.
I, I think, sorry to interrupt. I don't think that we need to be using people identifying with disabilities using their names on this. I just would prefer that we don't.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you understood we were taking care of them. And any people that have that request, we, we, we do our best to accommodate them. And we usually can figure out a way to do that.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Alec, thanks for the thorough answer. Carol, thanks for the question. Mr. Vice President, thank you for the point of order. I think that's all we have on this. So with that, I will ask for a motion to approve the resolution from our vice president.
A move.
Motion's been approved. Just please note that the noise waiver starts on the 22nd of May, not the 8th. All right, any other questions before we vote? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bet.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitsley.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero, and this will also be on the council agenda tonight for approval.
That's correct, thank you. Next up is the fiscal year 2021, '22 budget and budget policies. We have had some lengthy conversations on this over the past few months. Appreciate all the work that went into this and the work from council members in getting their amendments drafted, written to us. Eric, your indulgence in our changes and expertise of helping us through that. I will, I'm going to open this, I'm going to start just because I'm the president, and sometimes I get to do that. And I'm going to make a motion for an amendment that I shared with you all that would move $20,000 from the line item 101.17290074100.00000. City-supported agencies for sister cities, reduce that by $20,000 and move that to the Office of the City Attorney's operating budget. And the goal of this would to be hosting quarterly expungement clinics to help folks navigate the expungement process. And along with it is the budget policies language that I have included in my amendment to you all that specifically speaks to the goals of improving social equity, combating income inequality, and improving job and business license access. This expungement clinic for assisting Lansing residents if they qualify for expungement and assist in completing necessary application paperwork. Further, the language would require the Office of City Attorney compile a quarterly report to identify the number of residents that take advantage of the expunged clinic, expungement clinic opportunities. So I would move that, and Mr. Vice President, you have the gavel.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Sherry, I saw that your hand was up, you have something to add?
I was just going to make sure that Council President Spatafor passed the gavel before the final motion. It was just a technicality, we're good.
Perfect. All right, so again, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Councilwoman Jackson, go ahead.
Thank you, just a couple of questions. One is, what are the anticipated costs for the program? And also, why did you choose the sister cities? And what happens to sister cities?
Mr. Vice President.
President Spatafor, go ahead.
The anticipated costs were related to materials to produce, to advertise the events, to get them out in the public. And then any type of potential overtime or personnel costs that may be associated with it as we look to these potentially being on weekends or in evenings and things like that. Just to, it was a rough estimate of $5,000 per workshop done quarterly. And that was what, one of the reasons why we want to make sure there's a report because if it turns out we're spending too much or allocated too much, we can bring that back or whatnot. And then as far as sister cities, it was one of those line items that wasn't funded last year. And the group really did a great job of privately raising dollars. And that was something that even around this table a few years ago, we discussed the possibility of moving that to a self-sustaining model. So they've done really good work as a regional body to pull in dollars from around the region to help support those efforts. And I would say that if Sister Cities has events or particular asks from us, they're not negated or excluded from coming to us with a community funding application for those. But rather than, we've tried to move slowly away from those carte blanche, just dollars out in the, into the public without the application process on these, on these different agencies. That's through the HRCS, we've done it. Even like with Advanced Peace, even though it's a pretty expensive city-supported agency, there is a product that's being, you know, produced and bought. So that was my thinking with Sister Cities was, it wasn't funded last year. They did a great job of fundraising. We had a conversation around this table about backing off our support as sort of guaranteed. And this would do that, and they would still be allowed to apply for funds through the, you know, community funding grants and things like that. So that's, I think, did I answer all of your questions, Mr. Councilmember Jackson?
You did, if I can throw one more in there. And this is, the intent is that this is annual, so for one, one every quarter every year? Because this will be a reoccurring?
I mean, that'll be up to the mayor, I suppose, next year to put that in the budget or us to keep funding it. But my goal would be to do this indefinitely because I think it's a really good service. And I have spoken to the city attorney about this. They do not see this as conflict, they will not be acting as legal counsel. They will merely help folks facilitate figuring out the process to get started.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. President Spatafor, I, I have one particular question. I guess if we could include some language that asks the city attorney to assess the needs of people who receive these clinic services. I'm just interested, you know, this program would be great as a starting point, but we might want to expand services to do something else to help with expungement. And I think that with the city attorney get, operating those clinics, I guess, he'll be able to, their office will be able to get some insight into what more they might need. Just like us to have that documented somewhere when we come revisit this in the budget next year. Thank you.
President Spatafor, you muted.
Yeah, the ask was to expand the language to include a needs assessment on other needs that the participants may need? Okay, so I would.
Yeah, exactly, a survey even would be fine.
Okay.
A survey or something like that.
So I would propose then, at the tail end of my budget policy language, the Office of City Attorney should compile a quarterly report to identify the number of residents that take advantage of the expunged clinic opportunities. And the, and an assessment. Hold on, I'm done. We'll come back to that, Brandon, if you may, okay.
Go ahead and work on wordsmithing that a little bit. We're going to go to Councilwoman Wood, go ahead.
President Spatafor, I just want to clarify, and then with the city attorney as well. What we're doing is offering information to individuals to allow them to do the expungement of their record. So, you know, anything, we'd have to be careful when I'm thinking of Councilmember Betts' request that it's not seen as that we are helping to fund somebody who might have limited funds to go through this process and things like that. And is that correct, Jim?
Yes, yeah, and as a matter of fact, that information probably will be statistical so that we don't release any names to anyone, but yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, yeah, President Spatafor, go ahead.
Yeah, so what I've come up with is the office attorney is requested to compile, is requested to compile a quarterly report to identify the number of residents that take advantage of the expunged clinic opportunities and an assessment of further needs of the residents served.
That sounds perfect, thank you.
And then Jim's got the intent behind that.
Yes, fantastic. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So I'm trying to understand Councilmember Betts' language, which I think is great. And then think about what Councilwoman Wood said. Should we put in there, you know, make the necessary referrals instead of an, and I'm probably wordsmithing and too focused on the words, but I want to make sure that we don't get caught up in providing a service. So maybe we should just be making necessary referrals for.
Well, I know, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
I've already had the Office of Financial Empowerment reach out to me, just super excited about this and sort of the synergies that could take place there. So I think I'm good with saying an assessment because that'll just give us sort of a guide of, maybe Jim will know referrals they've made and that kind of stuff, and I don't want to be too prescriptive here. I think we can glean some good information by what else they refer people to in other city services.
All right, so are we clear, folks, on what we're, we're voting on? All right, fantastic. So again, there is a motion on the floor. We have some amended language, we'll need to see that obviously as part of tonight's meeting. So with that said, Mrs. Boe, would you please take the roll?
On the amendment to the budget from Council President Spatafor. Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Bet.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitsley.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
President Spatafor, do you have any other amendments? All right, you have the gavel back, sir.
Okay, so that takes us to, I know two other, three other amendments have come through, and I see Councilmember Spitzley's hand, so Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, President Spatafor, and I appreciate everybody's patience as we muddled through the language last week. And a special thank you for Councilmember Wood for helping me out on this. I sent everybody an email, and it had the specific language that I wanted to include in the budget priorities. I understand that for this year's budget, you know, we've pretty much allocated dollars. But I would like further study and further insight on the creation of a cold case unit within the Lansing Police Department. And so the language that I shared with everybody would have both the Ways and Means Committee and the Public Safety Committee working with our internal auditor basically seek out the funding for this cold case unit for the inclusion in the 2022, 2023 budget. And then a report from those joint committees detailing that, those investigations presented to council before we put in our budget priorities for the next fiscal year. And just, just for some background, you know, as of 2021, there are 85 cold case homicide cases in the city of Lansing with one detective assigned to investigate the cold cases. And so this cold case unit would be established within the Lansing Police Department and would, at a minimum, require an additional detective position, one half law support position, one half investigative support position, and one IT professional at an estimated cost of $250,000. Now, I did talk to Chief Green when I was figuring out what would be the needs of this cold case unit. And, and I also briefly talked to the mayor about it, and that seems to be, at a minimum, what it would take. On a side note, I do want to just highlight that we had two young men lose their lives last night. And, you know, it's a horrible thing, and as a mother of two young black men, I can't imagine what they're going through, and just throwing out my deepest sympathies to the mothers for their losses. So with that, I would request inclusion of this cold case, the funding and the investigative arm of it through Ways and Means and Public Safety into the budget priorities.
Hey, I do hear a motion in there.
Yeah, there was a motion in there, I moved.
There was, there was, and it's in the draft, the most recent draft that is on, in your packet, or at least it was sent around four o'clock this evening, if you haven't seen it online at all, or if you printed it off earlier. So it's our discussion on Councilmember Spitzley's proposed amendment to the budget policies. Seeing, oh, I see, yeah, there we are, Councilmember Betts and Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you, President Spatafor, thank you, Councilwoman Spitzley for bringing this forward. I guess my question for you would be why the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee is not engaging in this report that's being written about how to fund the additional officers?
I mean, there's no, you bring up a good point, and there's no doubt that, in my mind, you know, there, there probably is a place for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. However, you know, it is a Ways and Means for funding and generally matters of police go through public safety. I agree, you know, if you look at the cold cases, I would, I would venture that the majority of them are black and brown youths here in the city of Lansing. But I, I think that for procedure purposes, it's appropriate to go through Ways and Means and Public Safety. That's not to say that, you know, our DEI committee cannot look at other things as it relates to that, but to, you know, get a deep dive into the funding, I think that those two committees are the appropriate committees. Thank you for asking them.
Oh, Councilmember Dunbar, I'm sorry, I was reading the language.
That's okay, that's okay. I was just wondering why, why are we doing this as part of our budget priorities for this fiscal year when we can, we can do it anyway through our committees? This isn't a message to the administration, this is something that we want to do. So I was just wondering why we don't just do it.
It's, yeah, and I appreciate that, it's a good question. I think that, you know, having it go through the committees and having them look at, you know, a funding mechanism, whether it's taking money, you know, we could be working and it could be taking money out of the current police budget, but looking at grant dollars, I know Department of Justice has funding for these type of things. And so I, I just think it's, it's a more, it's a more thorough review of funding opportunities and looking at the cold case. I mean, it's clear that there is no funding this year, and I don't really want to get into a big stink about having to have someone choose to veto dollars if they're, if they're telling me there's no money. But by having these committees review it, put together a report, and then we include it in the budget priorities, you know, you know, the dollars, I mean, it's in this budget priorities that we're getting ready to vote on, but included in the 2020, 22nd, 23rd budget priorities, I think it sends a clear message to the administration that this is something that's important and that they need to start the process to find the dollars to fund it.
If I may follow up, I, I think that the idea that there isn't money in the current budget is, it's based on current budget priorities. There could be money in the current budget to do this if we reallocated money that we don't find to be a priority. I agree that this definitely needs to be done. I, of course, would, would take it from the existing police department budget and allocate it to investigators. That's what we've heard from the public, is that road patrol versus investigative, investigative staff would be a better use of their funding. So for me, like, I, I, I agree with the concept of doing this. I just think if we're going to put it forward now during this budget process, it would be worth it to put it forward as part of the budget. And I don't necessarily agree that there's no money to be found. It's, it's, it's just a matter of prioritizing what, what has been allocated and what hasn't, so.
And I, and I think that's, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but we've been told, both from, you know, we've been told that we can't, as a council, you know, allocate, administrate, you know, specific positions. So I can't put in the budget that we're going to take two beat cops and then train one to turn it into a detective. I mean, that's what I, that's what I understand. If somebody has a different thought about that, let me know. But I, from what I understand, that we can't, we don't have the authority to make personnel decisions. Having said that, I, I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Dunbar. I just decided to, you know, work on it this year and then, you know, work with the administration, hopefully to find the funding so that it definitely can be a budgeted item for next year's budget. And in the meantime, we work a little bit more with LPD to try to flesh out the program, making sure that the program is a robust, meaningful program, that it's funded in the way it should be funded, which is why I put in the language at a minimum, because it could be, they could find out that they need more. And so I think we need to do that thoughtful study in order to have a legitimate program.
Okay, thank you. We got three more questions, or three more hands, excuse me, I don't, wouldn't presume to count the questions by hand. So, Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I guess I'm a bit confused about the procedural tactic that we're using to put this in the budget policies. Because from what I understand, budget policies are this general direction that we as council give the administration and how to operate their budget. But this here is not doing that. This here is calling on council to investigate something through Ways and Means and Public Safety, which, from what I understand and how we've done this in the past, is we've introduced a separate resolution, separate from the budget, that then, you know, called on council to do those things. For example, in the case of the creation of the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee. So I'm a bit confused why we're including this and saying that this is going to be a budget policy in the future. It doesn't feel like it fits currently in this process, and I'm a little bit concerned about that. So I, I don't know who can address the process question for me. So I I don't know who can address the process question for me, uh, but I'm I'm open to hear anything. Thank you.
Yeah, um, Councilmember Spitzley, did you want to address that?
I I can, I mean, I I did, I was waiting for somebody else to step in, but I can address it. I mean, I think that for me, um, and I'm more than happy to put forth resolutions doing this. But this is a starting point and, you know, I I don't know if it's a tactic as more as a procedural thing where we're in the budget. We're talking about a specific um, item or um, funding that we would like to see or, you know, the creation of this cold case unit. And that we're going to be doing X, Y, and Z to um, you know, investigate the funds. I I don't, I don't, I don't think that it's it's not proper procedure. And then, once we, you know, go through and and flesh out the program, we actually put it in, you know, our budget, our proposed budget priorities for the next year. I just think we're working on something in this budget period for insertion into the next budget period. And this is how, this is how I propose to do it. If if it's not proper, or we need to do it some other way, I'm I'm open to that too. So um, I understand your concerns and um, if there is a different way or this isn't um, the the proper procedure, I I hope Jim or or someone who's got um, a lot more experience would jump in and and let me know. Because this is important to me and I want to make sure that it's properly, you know, inserted where it needs to be.
Hey, we'll go to Councilmember Wood and then Council Vice President Hussein.
Uh, Councilmember Spitzley, this is absolutely appropriate to have it in our budget um, policies. It is an action that um, you are requesting that we investigate. And as a council, whether it's the administration that we've asked to do things or council. It's no different than when we said in previous budget policies about setting up ad hoc committees on housing and things like that. I mean, we we have done this um, before. And as you indicated, um, based on the report that comes out, we have a resolution stating we're going to do this report. And as the report comes out, then you can add the information that you have from that into the budget priorities that are given to the mayor. And then he can determine whether he's going to add it into the budget. And you'll have the information that you need if it's not entered into the budget. That allows you to to move forward um, on this. So um, you know, I don't see any problem with doing it uh, this way. So um, uh, again, this is our policies that we're that we're putting forth.
All right, Mr. Vice President.
Well, I'm going to be a little redundant. I was just simply going to say that, you know, there's a lot of different knobs and levers, uh, Councilmember Bets that we can pull to maneuver ourselves to do the really important work that we are supposed to do as a legislative arm of this of this government. The reality is eighty-plus unsolved murders is absolutely unacceptable. Uh, and so I will certainly support this. Um, I will certainly lend myself to the effort this year of to study this issue and 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 help figure out ways to. And and I'm going to be honest with you, I I challenged Councilwoman Spitzley last week to find the $250,000, just like Councilwoman Dunbar uh, did. But this is my sixth year on council, and this is the first year um, that I'm not going to be bringing amendments forth. This is a leaner budget than what people might want to admit. I've had conversations with department heads, we've looked at dollars, we've looked at the the impact of potentially moving dollars and and potentially, as an example, getting rid of vacant positions. Um, it is a very, very lean budget. Um, and it 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 was very, very difficult in a short period of time um, to really go through that and, you know, with this new kind of priority uh, and find the the necessary resources to fund it. But I think by, you know, and this is, this is how we speak, we speak through resolution. I think this group being resolute, resolute moving forward, I think we can come up with a plan. I think we can basically, uh, you know, and and with, that's another piece, obviously, through our committee work, we include the administration. Um, and I think we can include the administration and then come budget priority time. And we can hand this thing, uh, you know, to them on a silver platter as they craft the recommended budget. And hopefully this will be included so that we can just simply rubber stamp it next year. So I will be supportive of this and Councilwoman Spitzley, I certainly appreciate your work um, to get us to this point.
Okay, um, Brandon, is is your question satisfied or do you want me to call in the city attorney?
I I would like to hear from the city attorney. Again, we've kind of been going back and forth on how supportive we've been of this. But it really is the question of if we're allowed to put this thing calling on council to do something in the budget versus in a separate resolution. I'm not saying that I'm not supportive of this. I'm just saying I want to make sure that we're following proper legislative procedure, which we all aspire to do. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chris, uh, Brandon, uh, Kim.
Well, the charter actually provides and requires the um, uh, city council to adopt citywide budget policies and priorities each year be before October first. So to have those policies in a budget is appropriate. The whole scheme, though, is to have it so early that the mayor can prepare a budget the next year. But there's nothing that restricts you from putting it in this budget or by doing it by separate resolution.
Okay, thank you. That that really does answer my question. I appreciate it and sorry about taking up the time.
I moved it to five. All right, so we do have a proper motion before us to include Councilmember Spitzley's language of intent into budget policies. Are there any further questions or comments before we call the roll? Seeing none, Sherri, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes, and thank you, everyone.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bet.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yep.
Motion carries eight zero.
Very good. I think we have two more, one from Councilmember, Councilmember Woods, all right.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Um, before I get into my um, budget um, uh, amendment, I I have um, two questions I I'd like to ask. First of all, um, I know that I had asked on the record um, at the last committee of a whole meeting about the Teamsters. And I see that the mayor is um, on here. So I was wondering if he could answer the question as to whether um, the money that is currently, that we're currently uh, looking at approving um, for the the next budget cycle, whether that includes um, money to compensate the Teamsters.
Mayor.
Yes, uh, there are dollars available within the budget for an increase. We have not negotiated a specific percentage. So I can't say how much that's going to be, but there are dollars available. And we do plan to initiate conversations and negotiations for a um, it's either a CBA or an MOU, we actually have, it depends on the Teamsters unit. So there are dollars allocated in the budget for that purpose, but we do not have a contract finalized. And we will uh, start working down on that as soon as you pass this budget and there are dollars there to work with.
So this is um, we're looking at the fact that because this is July first um, start date that you have, that you're working through this to start for July first, is that correct?
Absolutely.
All right, and then um, my other question had to do with the vacancy factor. And I know that uh, we did receive some information from um, Jake on that. It's my understanding that um, you have taken um, the vacancy factor um, out of individual budgets. Which had been previously um, looked at as positions, specific positions that you were going to leave unfilled to now um, a line item that um, you will continue to fill positions, knowing that there will be some um, unfill during the process of the this coming fiscal year, is that correct?
That is all correct. We were um, we were never intending to leave specific positions vacant. It was a, in essence, a working document of ideas, should we not get federal dollars? So um, it's the same, we have, we have made it the same as what you've seen in the past with a specific predicted vacancy factor. But we are, we are trying to fill as many positions as we can with our HR staff and and uh, with the expertise that's out there. So if anybody knows of anybody um, who wants to apply for a job in the city, please have them apply. Because one of the things that we're seeing is a a lack of applications. So uh, absolutely, Councilwoman Wood. Um, and I will say, especially for our our yard waste, if anyone knows any seasonals with the CDL, please have them apply. Because we are short on staff. So yes, it's a, it's just a straight vacancy factor in the same way you've seen years in the past.
And just to to make sure that we're all on the same page, you have not directed any department heads to leave a position vacant, is that correct?
No, that's correct. I have not directed any department heads to leave positions vacant unless there's a restructuring going on. And I can't think of one going on right now, but um, no, we uh, we want to fill the vacancies. We want to to get the staff in, but um, that's just difficult to do.
Okay, thank you. So that takes me um, to my budget amendment. This has to do with the Racial um, Justice and Equity Plan. This was sent out to uh, council members. I'm not going to read the account number as um, President Spatafor did, because I'll get lost in it before I get done with it. So um, what it is, is subtracting $300,000 from the HR um, a human resource operation line and inserting it into a non-departmental reading contingency for racial justice and equity equity plan for $300,000. No expenditures will be made from this account until a plan to utilize these funds has been presented to the city council by the mayor. And that plan has been approved by the majority of council. No expenditures will be made from this um, uh, account until a, well, I just read that, until approved by the mayor uh, by a majority. So um, I would move um, this amendment. There is budget policy um, uh, explanation in there as well as the uh, transfer that was created by our internal auditor, Eric Hewitt.
Brewer.
Brewer, I'm sorry.
I would just like to point out that I messed up the numbers if anyone was actually paying attention. When I read them out loud, so I don't advise doing that. There is a proper motion and I do see a hand from Councilmember Bets.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Thank you, Councilwoman Wood for bringing this uh, to the table. Um, I guess my question is, I I I thought that the mayor was just supposed to execute whatever the plan from, I'm sorry, I don't remember the really long acronym for this thing. I'm trying to find it, the MJRC or uh, whatever that is. Um, I thought the plan was just to execute whatever plan that they came in. And I'm wondering um, what you consider the role of council to be in that discussion? If you think that this is just going to be, okay, we're going to rubber stamp this thing? Or if you want to include council in the conversation about exactly what uh, the recommendations are? And then what the mayor should be doing about that? I'm just interested in what your long-term vision on this is. Thank you.
We received a proposal to the budget plan um, from the mayor's office uh, explaining how the outline was to utilize these funds. There were a number of council members that spoke up and had questions about how those funds are going to be used and why this group or that group had not had an opportunity to weigh in at the time. So a- after the discussion that we had in Committee of a Whole, I suggested at that time that we look at creating a contingency account or what is also known. That would allow those dollars to be set aside and not spent until we received um, the, an additional plan from the mayor. It's similar to what happens with the budget. He can present it, we can go back and take a look at it and say, we agree with this, we don't agree with that, and it goes back to him. And he can make the adjustments or keep submitting, you know, the same plan again. The goal is, um, because of the short budget turnaround time and the fact that many groups were still working on this, it would give us an opportunity and give them an opportunity uh, between now and hopefully July first to have um, a further discussion as to exactly how this money was going to be allocated. I know Councilmember Spitzley had asked several questions of HR on how they had come up with the certain things that they were looking at. I know Councilmember Dunbar had asked um, about contracting some of these out and how we've gotten to that position. So this just gives us, it says that we believe that the money is important. We're leaving it in the end in an account marked for that. But it gives us an opportunity to have additional information before we, before this uh, money is expended.
Okay, thank you very much for explaining that. I I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware and everything. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Bets, Councilwoman Wood, seeing no further questions. So last, please call a roll on the creation of the control account.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Bet.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you very much. The motion passes and the amendment is adopted. Councilmember Wood.
I I did want to also um, make clear that I had talked this over with the mayor and he was supportive of this going into this account and um, giving us all an opportunity to listen to the public before um, making expenditures from from this account. So I did want to make sure people understood that as well. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add to that. I know that you and I chatted as well um, through the discussion about possibly bringing in other folks who had worked on the research and talking about the efficacy of some of the programs as we deliberate on that control account and those funds.
Yep, yeah, and that's, I concur with everything Councilwoman Wood said. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. This is a a great idea to to use the control account. We will, as requested, uh, ask the city of San Antonio, that's one of the models that um, that Kim Coleman had looked at. I think Councilwoman Spitzley asked about other cities, and that's one of the models that that we're using. We've been working with MPHI, the Michigan Public Health Institute, and they've been helping to to craft the report. The report, as the Councilwoman Wood said, the report will be done. Uh, it will go out to the public for discussion, and in that time, we'll have an opportunity to give a more full um, accounting and recommendation to this body. And so we will be presenting something in the next few weeks, uh, along with more information for you all. And uh, hopefully we'll be able to get that, the the control account dollars allocated so that um, nobody, nobody on this board or in the public or anywhere wants just a report to sit on the shelf. Uh, and a report without funding backing it up just sits on a shelf. So we want to, we want to get the internal processes changed, we want to have the dollars we need to implement it. And we look forward to working with you all to get that done over the next few weeks. So thank you, Councilwoman Wood, thank you, Councilman Spatafor, and I appreciate everyone's support on this.
You, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Attorney, anything you need to add?
Yes, not to this particular item, but the use of the word control account should be banned from the vocabulary of the municipality. I have had the opportunity now, uh, go today to go through uh, previous opinions of previous city attorneys that argued with former mayors about the use of a control account. Now, we're, and I'm going to get really down on the weeds here. We have a charter that, we have a charter that separates legislative from executive. The, you know, the council approves the budget, appropriates, and then the mayor spends or doesn't have to spend, but has the discretion. In previous administrations, there were these accounts established which actually directed the mayor how to spend. I don't see that here. I've talked to the finance director. I looked at the previous opinions, I see this, I almost thought it should be called a reserve account. Contingency is fine. It's not telling the mayor how to spend the money, it's not crossing that line. It's setting aside dollars for an independent review of a different plan. So I just wanted to get that on the record so that a year from now, when the control account issue comes up again, I won't have lacked myself in, okay? I just want to let you know.
All right, thank you very much, Jim.
All right. Thank you very much, Jim. So that, that, other members wishing to provide amendments. There you are. Councilmember Jackson. I knew that, but you needed, I needed a hand.
Mr. President, so two things. I'm going to start with kind of like Councilwoman Spitzley did with a proposed priority that I just emailed you. It's one line and it says Lansing seeks to approach public safety in a holistic proactive way that addresses the root causes of crime. I would move that for a budget priority.
Hey, it's been moved. Is there any further discussion on this budget priority?
Is this a priority or a policy?
The one that's for kind of today, but needs to be done by October. I get it mixed up. Priority, right? Isn't that what it is?
Tonight is policies.
Policy, thank you.
Okay, so you'd like to add to the budget policies Lansing seeks to approach public safety in a holistic proactive way that addresses the root causes of crime?
Yes.
All right. Jim, you have your hand up. Is that, do you need, okay, I can put it down, don't worry. Is there any further discussion on the issue? Councilmember Wood?
So what is the action?
Well, first, it's a similar action that Councilwoman Spitzley had that we voted on. And then I will introduce my amendment. That's, you guys heard substantially already, but. So the, the action would be to add this to the budget policy.
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jackson, I think, I, I've been asked this question by Councilmember Wood. So I'm going to put some words in her mouth, but I've heard them come out of it before. So the budget policies in her, in what she's getting at is would sort of generate an action for council or the city. What action is being generated by this particular policy?
Well, it, it's very general, just like most, all of the other policies we've had. If, if this is not, I mean. There could be action. It depends on how council and the city wants to act with this information. But for the most part, we're just open to looking at public safety a little differently, considering everything and trying to address the root causes. I don't know how else. It's once, it's one line. So I can't put it too much simpler, but it's basically an open invitation for the administration and us to consider alternatives. It's kind of general. It's kind of vague. But I think that it's appropriate motion.
So my, my question, if I may continue, President Spatafor. My question though, when I ask about action, are you asking the administration to do something? If, if that's what it is and the ask needs to be in that. If you're asking council to have public safety committee or the equity committee, you know, do something and submit a report, those are the actions that I'm asking as part of a budget policy.
So again, I mean, I'm a little bit, I guess I'm confused on how these general policies also require action. So I understand it's not the exact right time of the year, but I still am bringing it similarly to Councilwoman Spitzley did, and I also have an amendment following it.
With Councilmember Spitzley and with my amendment that I just made, it was directed that something was going to happen. Councilmember Spitzley asked that the ways and means in the public safety committee investigate and come up with funding, the potential of funding resources. With mine, it was the fact that the mayor was going to present a plan. So my, my question to you again is. A broad statement like that without a action doesn't really fit in, in this. And so that's where I, I'm trying to find out what you want us to do.
Sure. I would like, and I guess I'll add a sentence for council to have public safety or equity, diversity and inclusion to look at reimagining policing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a hand from Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I, again, I, I think I'm, these are, these are broad stroke requests and a lot of them aren't based in actual dollars. I get where you're going, Councilmember Jackson. I completely agree with you. I think in the, in the, in the realm of the budget though, maybe the request is that we look at ways to. I mean, for me, it would be divert money away from the existing police budget and put it into proactively addressing crime on the front end by reducing the factors, the socioeconomic behavioral risk factors, et cetera, that lead to crime. Because we know poverty is what leads to crime more than, more than anything. And so, you know, we, I think what you're wanting is for us to find money in the budget to put on front-end social services that we, that create equity and reduce poverty in, in Lansing. Am I, am I on the right track there?
Yeah, you're on the right track. And I honestly, I mean, I figured that this was like the least controversial way to say it because I think we would all, for the most part, agree. And I guess the action, again, adding the action would be to look at it in committee. And you know, if we vote it down, then it gets voted down today and then we move on to the amendment. But, and I can bring it again next time. I just didn't think it was that controversial to add as we've been adding them.
Hey, Councilmember Spitzley? Jim, you did, Councilmember.
Well, of course I was. And what I just said was really profound, but anyways. I don't think it's controversial, Councilmember Jackson. I think that your intent is a good intent. I just, I'm just trying to figure out what the product is. And so if you want the Committee on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion to look at that, I can support that. If you want the Public Safety Committee to look at ways to, you know, accomplish what you said and, and, and present recommendations by X date. I think that that would be something as well. It's not a controversial statement. It's just, I think it's a blanket statement that I personally don't know what to do with. And so that's where, that's where I'm struggling. In concept, I agree with what you're saying. I'm just trying to figure out how it fits in the intent of our budget policies and priorities. And so, you know, you can come back, I mean, you can do it today or you can come back with a resolution that asks council to do X or, or ask a committee to do X. And, and that specifically asks someone, or you can do that right now in the language by asking a committee or asking council to form a committee to do X. I think that that would be, I think, a, a more, I think that would, that would explain it a little better. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And, you know, I can type it up, but I guess I'd add one more sentence that says, and I would ask council to review, to re, to review reimagining in a committee.
Hey. Could you please restate your amendment for us for the record?
Yes.
I know you were writing it, so we can wait just a second.
Lansing seeks to approach public safety in a holistic proactive way that addresses the root causes of crime. City council, please review reimagining policing in Lansing in a committee.
Okay. Councilmember Betts?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Right. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
I'm still, I'm a little confused by this one, so I'm going to vote no as of right now.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
I understand the intent, which is why I'm going to vote yes.
I'm sorry, vote to vote?
She voted yes.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Wood?
Again, I'm not sure that we clearly understand what it is that we're supposed to be doing, so I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Hussein.
I understand the tent, intent, but because the way it's worded, I fear it's, it's just going to sit there. But because I do understand the intent, I will support yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
No.
That was a yeah?
That was a no.
That was a no, okay. Motion does carry five three.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson, you said you had another one?
Yes. So this is a amendment. This is very similar to the one I tried to bring last week with some clarification. So last week, well, let's just skip last week. I'll just tell you what it is this week. This week, I'm asking to use one of the six vacant police officers. Three of those have been vacant for over this last fiscal year completely. And to use that money that would have been at a police officer and fund an additional social worker, and this is where it's different from my proposal last time. This social worker would be not the one that's there now, not the one that's in the mayor's budget, but a third one. And the salaries, since they're not exactly the same, we would need to get $22,015. And I'm proposing that we move that from the police operating budget to the police personnel budget. And the reasons are, you know, with the intent of that budget priority, for the most part, people who have insecurities, housing insecurity, food insecurity, health and wellbeing insecurity. They're the people that are most vulnerable. So social workers ideally are supposed to help those people with wraparound services that will help their insecurities. So if we have another social worker on the force helping with that, it should help those people out. And even possibly in the long run, help them from being involved in the criminal justice system further. So what I propose to do is not to take officers off the street because there's already six unfilled positions. And again, three of those have been there longer than this whole, this whole fiscal year. So it wouldn't change any staffing levels. All it would do is put a social worker on the street. And there's six officers vacant. There's a sergeant vacant. There's a detective vacant. There's a bunch of administrative positions vacant. So the net public safety effect wouldn't be less officers on the street because we've never, we don't have a full amount of officers on the street. What it would do is provide another social worker to help with all the things that social workers need to do, which we, for the most part, I think, agree that's important work. So there's that part. And then there's just the desire not to arbitrarily unnecessarily increase the police budget when it is the largest department budget and it grows every year. And we don't have money like that. So I would move that we that we switch, that we use one vacant police officer, convert it to a social worker and add, and take $22,015 from the police operating budget and move it to the police personnel budget to offset the difference. Thank you.
There's a proper motion and I see a few hands for discussion. Councilmember Spitzley?
Okay, so are, are we running into the same concern that we had before? Where are we allocating? How? Is this where we're telling LPD, you know, person, are we dipping into personnel issues, Jim? I'm trying to figure out, is this something where we've kind of crossed the line here?
Well, you can, you can allocate it for a social worker or some line item like that without getting into more detail.
But he's saying that he wants to take an unfunded position, if there's such a thing, a police, a police officer's position. Eliminate that and, and convert it to a social worker position. That's what I, that's where I'm talking about.
That's an administrative function. That's, that's the chief's function. Your, your job is to allocate the money, either allocate it or don't allocate it. But how that's implemented, I mean, if you line item as a social worker, you don't get to ju, run, write the job description and things like that. That's really crossing over to the executive branch, if that answers the question.
Yes, thank you.
I guess that brings a follow-up question. So are you suggesting that we can't create a position called a social worker? And so all, so like the, all the positions that council has funded, like a corridor inspector, a sustainability manager?
That's not what I'm saying. That's not what I said. You can create the line item, but you, that's, you can't be going deep into the management function, the administrative function of the executive branch. So if you were to create a social worker to deal with X, Y and Z, that's one thing and you fund that. But to go further with a job description and.
You can't, you can't, you cannot, it, what I believe is you cannot say, we're going to switch. We're going to, we're going to hire a social worker in place of a police officer. We cannot, you can't do that.
That's just wording, I guess.
No, but, but you're, I get, I understand. I'm just, you know, I, I've looked at your resolution and that's why I'm asking the question is, the resolution definitely compares the police, a vacant police officer's position and says that the police officer numbers would go from 205 to 204. And so that's my, that's my concern. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we, you're within our authority to, to do what we're supposed to do.
You, you're absolutely right. I missed that question. You could cut the budget, the operating budget, whatever, by X dollars and allocate it for another position. But to be able to direct the chief of police to do X, Y and Z, no. That's, you, you have to do it through the money.
Sure. Okay. So I guess, you know, since this is the time and place for the discussion, so.
Councilmember Jackson, I think we have some hands up and then we'll come back to you.
Sure.
Councilmember Betts? I'm sorry, Councilmember Dunbar was first.
Okay. The simple way to do this is to remove that funding for that position from the police department budget and put it into the fire department budget where the new social worker is going to be housed anyway. They can, they can choose not to spend that money on a social worker in the fire department, but we have effectively removed the funding for that position from the police department. So I would suggest if that's how you're doing it, because from my understanding, the way that the new social worker is set up in the mayor's proposed budget is that social worker is not housed in the police department. That social worker is housed with the fire department. Am I correct in that?
I don't think so. I think that there's a new social worker in the police department and then there are new positions in the fire department to help with social services through 911 through the county health department.
So that social worker that, that we, that the new social worker, the two social workers then are all housed in the police department?
No.
Yes.
No.
And this third one would be as well.
Mr. President, the proposal from the, the proposal from the administration was to add one position to the police department that I will allocate to a social worker and two community health workers that we will work with the Ingham County Health Department to contract that would operate with our 911 in the fire department. That would operate with our nine one one in the fire department.
And and council member Jackson's position, proposed position would be a third social worker. In the police department.
Correct. That concludes the hands. Councilmember Jackson. Please continue.
Okay, thank you. So. I'm, I'm guess I'm just a little bit off here. So counsel can. Fund a position. And counsel can. Defund a position? Can we do that?
But Mr. City Attorney, then council member Bets.
Well, you you do it through the, yeah, you do it through the. Removing the the amount of money for that position. Yes.
So I'm sorry I described it that way as switching it, but. I guess that I would like to. Subtract the amount of a police officer's salary. And add. The amount of a social worker. Which, since they're not the same, I would then move twenty two thousand fifteen dollars. From operating to personnel. To make it even. To make it balanced.
Thank you. Councilmember Bets.
I, I wanted to clarify for councilmember Jackson. What we're doing in this process technically is we're changing the operating and the. Personnel line items. I clarified this with the administration. So basically. All that these accounts are gonna look like is you're taking some money from. One part of this and putting into another. This has nothing to do with creating position. In fact, Chief Green could say, well, I'm just going to put this twenty thousand dollars and. Give a bonus to my, I mean, I, this won't happen, obviously, but you know, like, he can spend this money however he wants. That's an administrative function. What we're doing very particularly is allocating those dollars. So. It doesn't, it might not be a social worker. We're just putting dollars where they need to be in the budget, i- if that makes more sense to you.
It it actually doesn't, only because I'm operating on the idea that we are able to create positions and fund positions. And the chief or the mayor administration would then have to fill them. That's, that's what I'm under belief.
I think one of the.
Be, would then fill them if they. If they can or if they want to, but they would be funded by counsel.
I think one of the things that we've done in the past is when we want to fund different positions. Reached agreements with the administration on how to do that. Because right now, councilmember Jackson, with the intent of your amendment would be to hire a social worker. The allocations would be there for an additional twenty thousand dollars and twenty two thousand fifteen dollars in personnel expenditures. In the police department. And the mayor could. Fill that with a police department, police officer, and then we'd have twenty two thousand extra and overtime and twenty two thousand less in operating expenditures. So in the past, what we've done is we, we've reached agreement with the administration on. We found these dollars. I recall with the sustainability officer, we, we pulled some dollars out of the fire department with with an unfilled. Assistant chief position with the agreement of the of the administration to fund the sustainability officer. The same was done. With the chief strategy officer and sometimes I think councilmember Hussein has done. Some code enforcement and and others. So that, I think that's while we've funded positions in the past, it's always been. An agreement with the administration that those dollars would be used with the intent that the that the council. Put forward. So so I guess, does that help clarify sort of the competing explanations here?
A little bit, I guess. Well, I think there might be some other business, but I would still. Ask that we make that idea legal, which seems like it can be done, and then vote on that. You know, I'm surprised to hear that we can't create positions. But I understand that's what you're telling me.
Thank you, councilmember Wood, and then I think we'll wrap it up.
When we are given the budget, it's broken down into categories for personnel. Operating expenses. And if you look at the budget resolution that was emailed to us. When we get line items, it is to give us additional information. But what we're in essence passing is the personnel and the operating. We are not passing line by line. And. As different ones have said. Already, we can move money into an account, an appropriation by the charter is not. For the mayor, it's not a mandate to spend. We cannot force the mayor or the chief. Of police or the chief of the fire department to hire. Or to do something with those dollars, even though that's our intent. Those dollars can continue to stay there till the end of the year and then be absorbed. Into our revenue. Our. Our rainy day fund or to, if we were over budget to to. To make good those things. So that's why some of the comments that the council members have made is where we are today and without an agreement. Like we got from the administration and the racial inequity fund. We receive, we got an agreement from him. I could have done, we could have moved that money, but without an agreement. He would still have the right to spend it, but he has agreed to bring us the information before spending it. So by charter, we are limited to what we are allowed to do.
I appreciate that. I guess I'll I'll make this motion in the simplest form. That will be non binding to the administration, and then they can. Either in good faith, try to fill it or not. But if we simply. Tell me if we can do this, move twenty two thousand fifteen dollars from the police operating to the police personnel budget. Can we do that?
Certainly can, yes.
Okay.
That's what your amendment does technically.
Yes, so I'll make that motion, and I understand, I mean, the mayor's on. The chief of police is on, and we're all here. So the intent would be. Or. The underlying. Original amendment I had, but I understand that the chief and them don't have to do it, but we would certainly set it up for them. Should they choose to. And in good faith, we'll just see what happens if they think it's a good idea or not. But first, we have to think it's a good idea or not, and I would move that we. Reallocate twenty two thousand fifteen dollars from police operating to police personnel.
Proper motion, councilmember Bets.
Thank you, President Spatterfor. Councilmember Jackson, I appreciate the intent behind this. My thought would be. I'm not gonna support this unless there is a corresponding budget policy. Kind of directing the funds in the direction of social workers suggesting that, because from what I understand, the administration. Wants to follow our budget policies. I'm afraid of just wholesale putting money into operations because. As President Spatterfor mentioned, that could be spent for overtime for police officers if that's what. The department chooses. So that's, that's my thought. So I I would ask that you amend it to also include. A policy of some sort that then we can include in the, in the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, the motion before us is on a transfer between operations and personnel. Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Wood.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
No.
Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Spitzley.
No.
Councilmember Stratford.
No.
Motion failed.
Right. Are there any other amendments before the committee? Seeing none, I'd ask Vice President for a motion on the amended twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two resolution and budget policies.
So moved.
There is a motion before us, councilmember Wood.
Would move to separate the budget and to. Vote separately on the HRCS budget.
There is a motion to divide the question on the HRCS budget. We will first take. That, and then we'll come back to you, Patricia. I know you're, what you're gonna say. Could we please have a motion to, I need, I'm sorry, a vote. On dividing the question and pulling out the HRCS budget. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Stratford.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
At, you're muted when you said yes. I'm not allowed to say yes.
Sorry, yes. Yes.
Motion carries eight zero to divide out the HRCS budget.
All right, councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to ask to divide out the economic development budget, but. I have changed my employment contract to where I don't have any dealings with. The Racer Trust properties here in Lansing, but I do want to say that publicly, just in case someone knows I, my employment contract was. Changed so that dealings with the Lansing property, I have no dealings with them. So. I don't need to ask for a separate budget. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Wood.
At the vote of the HRC budget, I would like to be recused from that. The agency that I work for, retired and senior volunteer. Programs of Ingham Eaton in Clinton County does receive funds. None of it goes towards my salary, but these are matching funds. That are utilized when we are applying for federal and state. Funds that do go to my salary.
Thank you, councilmember Wood. When we get there, we will make sure to consider that recusal.
Thank you.
The first item before us, though, we will, we will vote on the motion before us, which is the budget minus the HRCS budget as moved by Vice President Hussein. Is there any further discussion before sending the sound to counsel? Very good. Sheri, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Kathy, you muted it right after you said it, right?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
I'd ask for recusal.
We've, we've, we were voting on everything but HRCS right now, Carol.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Yes.
And then councilmember Stratford.
Yep.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Now we have the HRCS budget. Now I'd ask for motion recuse, councilmember Wood. It's been moved by councilmember Spitzley to recuse councilmember Wood. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Stratford.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Motion to recuse councilmember Wood carries seven two.
Thank you. Now we have before us the HRCS budget. Carol, plug your ears or stay on mute, one of the two. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Stratford.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero on the HRCS budget.
Thank you. Then both are on the council agenda for this evening, and I see no. Further business for the committee. Well, I mean, let me stop real quick. You know, still got thirty six minutes of your time, but I have had a number of questions regarding return to work for the city of Lansing. Mr. Tate and the mayor have agreed to present after we got the budget taken care of. So when we had a clear agenda, so I'll be working with the administration to get Mr. Tate in. To talk about the return to work plan for the city. You did get an email today from HR. I believe it was from HR that talked a little bit about the phased in plan for bringing employees back. I also have a conversation coming up with city attorney and the mayor to talk about us coming back as well. And our staff. City, City Hall are still working remotely unless they have projects they like, they they have to do in the city. Hall for confidentiality sake or logistical sake, one, you know, cataloging the VHS tapes that Joan Bauer passed a resolution requiring they all be kept indefinitely. So working on that, Joan, if you're watching at home. So those kinds of things. So we're gonna. Work on getting our staff back to full strength in the office, and we do have the. The fortunate setup of a very large office space, so there's not a huge social distancing concern for our staff, but we are. Playing this by ear and following the Myosha guidelines as they are updated. Just so you're all aware, councilmember Wood.
I just have one quick question before going to tonight's meeting. I know that we received the. General Fund Quarterly Report, and I know that we both, that we have finance. Still with us. I just wanted to know if there was anything outstanding. I know we're gonna be getting the report. But if there's anything outstanding, we should be aware of before we pass the budget this evening.
I see Jake has just joined us, and so has Robert, so I will let them. Turn on their cameras while I stall so they get connected. Jake or Robert, is there anything that we should be aware of before we, we click yes on this budget? Hope you're muted, Jake.
Eventually I'll get there. I can be happy to report that we did receive the final half of the. Public Safety, Public Health Payroll Reabortion Program Grant, which. From the state of Michigan, we've also received. Funding from the coronavirus relief for local government grants. That totals to about seven point three million dollars that we expect to see, or that we've received for the general fund. And that will be a positive impact on our overall budget. As in the twenty twenty two budget document that. We proposed, we have adjusted our FY twenty one. Projected budget, and that's shown in the quarterly report, as well as. We are considering, as we move on to passing the adopted twenty two budget. Through the standard budget cycle, we will continue to. Provide a final amendment for the FY twenty one, which will include allocating the vacancy vector. That cover it?
Yes, I think, well, it's covered for me, councilmember. All right, very good. Seeing no further business for the committee, we are adjourned. We'll see you at seven o'clock.